Today is Wednesday, June 22nd, 2011. It is 9:30 a.m. and the Portland City Council will come to order. Good morning, Carla, how are you?
Good morning, I'm fine.
Did you enjoy the 15 minutes of sun yesterday?
I did.
Good, can you please call the roll?
Fish?
Here.
Saltzman? Leonard? Fritz?
Here.
Adams?
Here. We have a special presentation before we get into communications and the rest of the agenda. There are 38,000 public fleets in North America. Thirty-eight thousand fleet departments, bureaus, sections, groups in North America, not just the United States. But there is only one number-one fleet in North America, responsible for 29,000 vehicles and has responsibility for maintaining everything from electric bikes to police cars to smart cars, and soon, electric vehicles. This fleet that I'm referring to, Fleet Group, has eliminated 46 undersized vehicles from the city's fleet department, saving $1 million, has reduced overtime costs by 89% through a more streamlined workflow, reduced commercial repairs by $1 million over two years through reorganization and shop operations, is certified as an ecological business by the Pollution Prevention Excellence Program, Excellence Program, and has developed the largest green fleet in the region. Today, we are here to honor that group. And it is my great privilege to recognize the following people. John Hunt, please come forward. Jeff Baer. And of course, I'm referring to the City of Portland fleet. Would you all please stand if you're part of the fleet department? That is amazing. You make us incredibly proud. And that's the award.
Thank you, Mayor Adams and members of City Council. I'm Jeff Baer, Director of Internal Business Services. And with me today is John Hunt, who is our fleet manager. And it just seems like just yesterday, we were here celebrating City Fleet's accomplishment of being ranked number-two in the country, or actually, in North America. And today, we're here, as the mayor indicated, to celebrate being number-one. And that, yes, number-one, as the mayor said, where there's only one in the country who has done this, and that is City Fleet for the City of Portland. And so, being ranked number-one in North America is a huge accomplishment and puts a really, a large flag on the map for Portland as the national leader in operating the best fleet operation. And John is going to talk a little bit about some of the different aspects of the award itself and some of the accomplishments that he and his team have been able to do over the past year. And I really just want to set forth that each of the employees in City Fleet should really feel proud of this accomplishment and should take the opportunity to really reflect on the progress that they have made over the past few years to reach this noteworthy position. And of course, we would certainly want to thank the City Council, the mayor, for your support over the years to get us to this point. And especially, I want to thank Ken Rust as Chief Administrative Officer over the past few years to provide the leadership and to also to challenge us to always do better and make sure that we reflect the needs of our customers. So with that, I want to turn it over to John Hunt, who can talk about the particulars of the award itself.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. And congratulations to City Fleet for being named the number-one fleet in North America. You know, today, I don't know if you really realize this, but this is almost like the movie, you know, where you go and you're watching the underdog win at the end of the day. I mean, to come from virtually unranked to working really, really hard and making it to number-seventy-eighth, and then to work even harder and make it all the way into the number-one slot in such a short span of time is pretty much just a miraculous thing to have happened. So, I couldn't be any more prouder of the folks that are here today to accept, you know, your recognition, public recognition, for the very difficult tasks that they have before them each and every day. You know, and I think, especially in these tough economic times, to be able to implement best fleet practices. And I know at times, staff have looked at me like, "You're pushing us hard and there's more change and there's more things going on that are different than what I remember yesterday. And why are we doing this?" And I have to say that staff have been very agreeable and very willing, very willing to change. And I think that that's probably one of the things I'm the most proud of, of the group that's here. And also, we couldn't have done it as a fleet facility without the background of all the other departments within the city. I mean, I think of the $2.4 million EPA grant, you know, the sustainability, planning sustainability worked on. You know, we think of the different hybrid technologies and electrics and biodiesel and all the things that we've been able to implement as a city, because it truly is, you know, a city award. And I know that we're very, very proud to be a part of the City of Portland and the great things that go on here.
Well, thank you both. And again, thank you. And congratulations to the entire Fleet Department. I've been new dent in the back of my car, you might have read about. I got run into by bicyclists, so well, I don't need it worked on for now. It doesn't seem to affect the operations of the vehicle. But congratulations again and thank you. I'm just going to keep this here so all the cable viewers can see it when the camera pans on me. You'll get it back.
We can get a couple of pictures?
Yeah, do you want everyone in the picture?
We would love to have everyone.
All right, everyone get up here. Come on. Let's go. Yep. So we're going to line up here and face that way.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations. All good, we'll get on the edge. Everybody, keep moving.
Keep moving.
Thank you, congratulations. You don't get number-one very often.
No.
There you go.
It was fun, there were four and then there were two and now this is my one.
Number-one.
Yeah.
We're number-one. We're number-one. All right, we'll begin the regular, the normal agenda with item communications. We have four slots taken. Can you please read the title for 624?
Request of Barry Joe Stoll to address council regarding city-funded housing abuses.
Ask Sonia to come see Molly. There, are you here? Hi, welcome back.
Good morning. I'm a person with a disability camping in Portland. And I'm going to tell you a little bit about how I learned to be who I am. I was hitchhiking, oh, 1979. Got picked up by a fellow named Dallas Pemberton, and he shared that he was a professional boxer. And I said, "Wow, you have to be registered as a lethal weapon." He says, "No, but I have to identify myself." And he kind of shared that experience with looking at his dog dancer and showing us how she'd been just horribly badly cut, haircut, and got a bad haircut on the dog. And he complained, and they, like people tend to do, sent out the biggest guy and kind of, you know, used the muscle. And the big guy called him a punk. And then Dallas had to hold out his card and say, you know, "Go home and tell your mama a punk knocked your teeth out." So I've always tried to be fair and kind to you. And that's not worked out so good. So, one time, Mayor, you asked me about doing research into city funding services. I applied for housing hap, now called Home Forward, in October of 2009. I've got one place, I've got a year and a half left, another place, four to four and a half years, and another place, five to five and a half years. And that's since October 2009. But in the meantime, I gone out on a Central City Concern list on July of 2009, but they sent me a letter to the wrong address. And when I didn't respond to it in December of 2010, they took me off the waiting list. So that's good for their numbers, not good for me, of course. And Transition Projects, of course, has the funding for the rack. I went to get a locker yesterday, they couldn't issue them. I've got this great brochure, though, that says that part of that $46 million bucks went to that. I already informed your office, Commissioner and Commissioner. And, oh, Join. I went to them to get services in October. They visited my camp in January, and I learned in May that a fellow was, been my caseworker the whole time and never told me. So, Join got about a million bucks a year. I don't know about Transition Projects, when I was their client in 2009, they got about a quarter of a million bucks, just shy of that, about $240,000 and some change. And Central City Concern, I'm really not sure, but if you gave them the price of a first-class postage stamp, they wasted it. My handwriting is impeccable. They sent it to the wrong address, and when they got it back, they didn't even check their file. They knocked me off the waiting list. And that's the way the cheating goes in this city. And now you know. I'm still camping, come out and visit me. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Can you please read the title for Communications, item number 625?
Request of Crystal Vaughn to address council regarding the sit-lie ordinance.
Crystal Vaughn? Hi, welcome.
Hi there, it's nice to meet you. Good morning, Mr. Mayor and Commissioner Fritz and City Council. My name is Crystal Vaughn, and I'm here to express my concerns about the Portland sit-and-lie ordinance, which I was first made aware of two weeks ago, on June 9th. My three-year-old son and I decided to attend the Rose Festival Fair and watch the military ships arrive. We traveled by Max train and I took his stroller. Five exhausting hours later, I'm a 45-year-old mother, so I'm very tired, we decided to start home. I pushed my son in his stroller another half-mile to the Max stop on Sixth Street in front of Pioneer Courthouse. I needed to sit down and the only bench was in use. So I sat on a one-foot wall in front of the courthouse. This wall has been sat on for 150 years, I believe. But apparently, you're not allowed to, I didn't know that. I sat there so as not to obstruct pedestrians and to keep my son as far away from the speeding trains as possible. It was the safest place to sit. Less than a minute later, a police officer sternly approached us and yelled at me that "You are not allowed to sit here." He then, so then, I then sat on the sidewalk up against the wall, thinking this was in compliance. The officer then yelled at me, "You're breaking a city ordinance, you are not allowed to sit down." And he said this very sternly. I feared what would happen if I didn't comply, because I had no idea what would happen if I didn't listen. So I stood, I stood until our train arrived about five minutes later. I stood up. I have the following concerns regarding this ordinance after now having read it, reading its final draft. It states that the purpose of a sidewalk is to move pedestrians without obstruction. Yet nowhere did I see it mention waiting for a bus or train without a place to sit down. Only a person's luggage or deliverable merchandise is considered as not being a public nuisance. I never saw it mention a child in a stroller. So is my son considered a public nuisance if he's in his stroller, or is he considered luggage or merchandise? This ordinance also states that you must be eight feet from the frontage line of a building property on a sidewalk 10 feet or wider. I don't always bring my measuring tape with me when I sit, but this would mean that my child and I would be directly in the path of pedestrians and next to the street where the trains are coming by. So I would not consider sitting there. This ordinance places tension between police officers and citizens who have committed no crime or misconduct and who are not obstructing pedestrians. This ordinance does not solve any existing social problems, and sadly, I think it takes quite a bit of money away from programs that probably do need this funding. This ordinance does not allow a person the basic human right to sit down when needed, unless it's a medical emergency. For these reasons, this ordinance shows a lack of integrity and justification. And I have included copies for everyone, for all of you, and a picture of where I was sitting. Thank you for your time.
Were you given a ticket then, or no?
No, I didn't know if I'd be arrested. I had no idea what to expect.
So the purpose of the ordinance is to keep the pedestrian lane open?
Right. Yeah.
And that's the purpose of the ordinance?
Right.
There are other places on the sidewalk where one can sit? And you said your child was in a stroller?
Right. And we were up against the wall, out of traffic and away from the trains, yeah. Waiting for the train, yeah.
And you can't sit there.
And we were not allowed to sit there. And that's my whole point of being here, is I don't understand the...
It's to keep, that is, next to the sidewalk is the pedestrian zone, and that is the place we don't allow people to sit. Other places on the sidewalk, you can sit.
Mayor, if I might, we, there actually, we've had a lot of discussion about the particular location at the sidewalks advisory group, and the courthouse is a federal building and it's a federal wall, and a historic wall. So it's actually encouraging that you're here to advocate for people, mothers with children in strollers. There has been a lot of assertions that this, that our ordinance is targeted to people who live outside. And in fact, your testimony shows that it is evenly enforced. And we're actually doing a walkabout this afternoon from at 5 o'clock, starting in Pioneer Courthouse Square. If anybody wants to join me and other members of the Sharing Sidewalks Group to look at the few block places in downtown where there's no place to sit. And it's usually where there's transit or where there's very small, very narrow sidewalks because of the need for people with strollers, people with wheelchairs, to be able to traverse the sidewalk rather than sit there. But I do appreciate you coming in, and I also appreciate your mother sending in a very detailed email in support of your cause.
Kind of went into more detail than this, yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you very much, really appreciate your time.
Thank you for having me.
Can you please read the title for Communications, item number 626?
Request of Charles Long.
No, there's no clapping.
To address council regarding the assault on fatherhood.
No clapping. No sitting, no clapping, no nothing.
That's right. You can wave your hands. You, you can wave your hands.
Gee, thanks.
You're welcome. Is Charles Long here? All right, can you please read the title for Communications, item number 627?
Request of Rich Recker, on behalf of the Timbers Army, to address council regarding A.C. Portland Soccer Initiative in Support of Student Achievement and Community Development.
Welcome back.
Thank you very much.
Glad you're here.
My time on the microphone will be brief. I've invited some friends to join me in support of this presentation. I was commissioned six months ago by Adidas and the Timbers, the U.S. Soccer Foundation and America Scores out of New York City, to take Soccer City USA and create the world's best youth and community development organization. I think we've done just that. We've announced it informally recently, and we're about ready to roll out programs in the fall. This program has so much potential that I felt like we needed an army to make it successful. So I'd like to turn the microphone over to Nando to introduce our topic for today.
Good morning, Council. We are the Timbers Army, or more specifically, we are the 107 Independent Supporters Trust, which is a nonprofit, membership-based organization that promotes the game-day experience at the stadium. But it also, it also commits the Army to do community service and civic mind-ends. So, so the Timbers play the game, and Adidas supplies the equipment, and the Timbers Army supplies the people to do community service and to help the community. And Timbers and Adidas recently launched the A.C. Portland in partnership with Oregon Sports Authority Foundation, which is a unique after-school program that combines soccer, writing, public speaking, and after-school activities. So we would like to ask the Council to support that, that program.
I have to say, that's the best euphemism I've heard in a long time, and it's really under-describes the brilliance of the game-day experience. Is that what we're calling it now?
Yes.
I would say the fantastic rooting and cheering section for the Portland Timbers. And I also love your motto for the Friday, July 8th event at the St. John's Pub and Theater on North Ivanhoe. No pity, just breakfast. That's brilliant.
Hello, Mayor Adams and Council members. My name is Lucas Grabowski. I am a member of the Timbers Army and 107-ist, and I hope you'll pardon me for reading from prepared notes. Pardon. On Friday, July 8th, new enlistees in A.C. Portland will meet for an executive leadership breakfast in the St. John's neighborhood. And you have that information in the packages that Jeremy just handed out. Together, we will learn more about A.C. Portland and the positive impact it can have on our kids and our communities. And we'll break ground on St. John's Community Field at James John School, which is the location of one of the charter A.C. Portland Advantage Center locations. The Timbers Army will announce our plans for support of A.C. Portland at the breakfast meeting. And we've asked Portland's leaders to use the breakfast to pledge their commitments as well. And Mayor Adams, we know, we want to thank you for the pledge you've already given us in this area. A.C. Portland will need support from you and all Portland's leaders to rise to an immense challenge. Timbers Army invites each Council member to attend the breakfast and work together to determine the city's pledge to help A.C. Portland help Portland's kids. Thank you.
You're fantastic. City couldn't ask for a better soccer army, so I know I speak for everyone when I say thank you very much.
Thank you.
See you at the breakfast.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you. That takes us to the consent agenda. Does anyone wish to pull any items from the consent agenda?
642 was pulled.
642, okay. 642 is pulled. Carla, can you please call the vote on the consent agenda item?
Fish?
Aye.
Saltzman?
Aye.
Leonard?
Aye.
Fritz?
Aye.
Adams?
Aye. Consent agenda is approved. That gets us to the regular agenda. We have 9:30 time certain. Can you please read title for presentation, item number 628?
Reuse Week 2011.
This morning, we will declare Portland's Third Annual Reuse Week, a celebration of the principles of reuse and the outstanding local organizations which bring them to life. Over the past three years, the city has increasingly focused on supporting thoughtful consumption as expressed in our Climate Action Plan. I'd like to recognize Commissioner Nick Fish for further introduction.
Thank you very much, Mayor. This is our third reuse week presentation. I'd like to ask Bo Bullock from Schoolhouse Supplies and Jessup Beckett from Free Geek to come forward. And then, I'll just make some brief remarks. The mayor has issued a proclamation today. One of the best parts of our job is highlighting the extraordinary work of our community partners who make Portland a better place. And for three years now, we've celebrated our partners in the growing field of reuse. And they include Community Warehouse, Free Geek, Habitat for Humanity Restore, the Rebuilding Center, Schoolhouse Supplies, and Scrap. We talk a lot about the triple dividend, programs that deliver economic, social, and environmental benefits. These folks do that every day. They keep garbage out of our landfills, they promote job creation, they give everyday items new life with families, teachers, and artists in our community. They embody the best of Portland's values, and we at the city are honored to call you partners. I'd like to invite each of you to say something briefly. We'll recognize the other partners who are here, and then we'll read the proclamation. Welcome.
Thanks, Nick. Hello, my name is Bo Bullock. I'm with Schoolhouse Supplies, just one of the six reuse nonprofits that Commissioner Fish just mentioned that make up the consortium that's Reuse PDX. And just wanted to thank you all for inviting us here today to celebrate the Third Annual Reuse Week. And I'd like to take this opportunity to express our collective appreciation and gratitude to the City of Portland and Multnomah County for their progressive leadership and vision in organizing and promoting Reuse Week for the past three years. Since our inception, Reuse PDX has worked to establish an ongoing and active collaboration of reuse organizations within the Portland metro, of the Portland metro region, promoting reuse as a means to provide a greater social good. And in our experience, it's taught us that by working together, we can more effectively reach out to the community and advocate for reuse. I'd like to recognize the Reuse PDX partners again, which include Schoolhouse Supplies, the Habitat for Humanity Restore, Community Warehouse, Scrap, Free Geek, and the Rebuilding Center. And the Reuse PDX flyer that I think you all got gives you all of our organization's contact information and addresses. This year, the City of Portland's Bureau of Planning and Sustainability began collaborating with Reuse PDX around its Be Resourceful campaign, which inspires Portland residents in a positive way to think differently about how they consume goods and make decisions that consider environmental and local impacts that value health, family, and lifestyle. Earlier this year, Be Resourceful partnered with Reuse PDX at the Better Living Show to feature ways Portlanders can learn, create, donate, and participate in reuse in the community. There were over 16,000 attendees at the show, and the BPS staff and volunteers had over 2,000 conversations about creative reuse. As our collaboration evolves, we're beginning to use social media to reach out to the community and involve them in a more direct and personal way. To that end, we have established a Reuse PDX Facebook page. So we encourage you all to like our Facebook page, and would like to thank Nick Fish, who has already done so. Over the past year, we began exploring how our organizations can more consistently work together to promote the benefits of reuse. And in this exploration, it blossomed into a more focused effort to join together to promote reuse in our community, and has led to our forming a local chapter of the Reuse Alliance, which is a national organization focused on raising awareness about reuse. Through our works with the Portland Chapter of the Reuse Alliance, we submitted a proposal resulting in our bringing the next National Reuse Connects Conference to Portland in 2012. And we wouldn't have been able to succeed in bringing this conference to Portland without the support of our local government. In particular, I'd like to recognize and thank Mayor Sam Adams, Commissioner Nick Fish, Multnomah County Chair Jeff Cogan, and Bryce Jacobson with Metro, who provided us with letters of support that testify that Portland has a local government that's leading the integration of reuse practices into its long-term vision of a sustainable future. resulting in our bringing the next National Reuse Connects Conference to Portland in 2012. And we wouldn't have been able to succeed in bringing this conference to Portland without the support of our local government. In particular, I'd like to recognize and thank Mayor Sam Adams, Commissioner Nick Fish, Multnomah County Chair Jeff Cogan, and Bryce Jacobson with Metro, who provided us with letters of support that testify that Portland has a local government that's leading the integration of reuse practices into its long-term vision of a sustainable future. The Reuse Connects Conference will be taking place October 18 through the 20th in 2012, and it will feature a professional conference with experts from the reuse industry, sharing best practices and business models of replication. We're really excited for this opportunity that this conference will bring to Portland, and just kind of give us a chance to showcase our leadership in the many ways that we practice reuse on a regular basis. More immediately, this year's celebration of Reuse Week will take place this Sunday, June 26, from 11 to 4, as part of the North Portland Sunday Parkway's event. We'll be at McCoy Park in New Columbia at the intersection of North Trenton and North Woolsey. And we'll engage residents about reuse issues through games and by letting them share their stories, and we'll let people make their own buttons using creative reuse materials, and you're all invited to attend. And thank you once again. Your support and endorsement of our work is appreciated beyond measure, so thank you all.
Bo, thanks for being here. Before we introduce Jessa, I just want to say, you mentioned social media. We should also note that if people go to www.reusepdx.org, it has the links to all the organizations you've mentioned. And a number of us have done the Schoolhouse Supplies Spelling Bee.
That's right.
With varying degrees of success.
Yes. Appreciate that.
Anyway, so thank you for your good work. And Jessa Beckett from Free Geek, welcome.
Thank you. I'll keep my statements very brief. Free Geek asked me to come here mostly to say thank you, much in the same way that the Reuse PDX Coalition started out as a loosely affiliated group of people and has grown into something much more powerful. Free Geek is much the same way, started out as three people about 10 years ago who had an idea that monitors and computers probably shouldn't go into landfills, and has become a huge organization. And that's in no small part thanks to the local government here. I don't think that Free Geek could become what it has become in any city except Portland. And so we wanted to say thank you, both to Commissioner Fish and to Mayor Adams.
Oh, hey, finally, good.
Thank you very much.
This is great.
Thank you very much.
For the rest of you, of course, you're welcome to come into Free Geek anytime that you want.
I've been asking for one of these for a while.
Yeah, good, thank you very much.
Thank you both very much.
Mayor, there's a few other people that are here, and before I read the resolution, I'll just, we'll just ask them to stand so we can acknowledge them. Andy Olds and Kristy Wood from Community Warehouse, and they, by the way, supply furnishings and cookware and other things, beds, mattresses, for many of our formerly homeless families in our community. Sarah Brownstein from Multnomah County, Cindy Carell from Habitat for Humanity Restore, and Joe Canal from Habitat for Humanity Restore. Thank you all for joining us, and it's my honor to read the proclamation which the mayor has issued. Whereas Reuse Week is a celebration of the principles of reuse, sustainability, and community building, and the local organizations that bring them to life, and whereas the city's relationship with Community Warehouse, Free Geek, Habitat Restore, the Rebuilding Center, Scrap, and Schoolhouse Supplies continues to grow, most notably with the creation of the Reuse PDX Consortium in 2010. And whereas the Oregon Chapter of the National Reuse Alliance successfully bid to host the Fall 2012 Reuse Connects Conference, which will bring hundreds of reuse professionals to Portland, elevate the city's profile as a leader in reuse, and promote reuse in our community. Whereas the centerpiece of Reuse Week 2011 will be the North Portland Sunday Parkway Celebration, Tom Miller must have put this in the resolution.
Really?
Celebration on June 26, where partner organizations will gather at McCoy Park for games, giveaways, and more. Whereas reuse conserves scarce and precious natural resources, diverts a wide variety of materials from the waste stream, gives new life to goods and materials, and helps improve the lives of some of our most vulnerable residents. Whereas our partner organizations divert millions of pounds of waste from landfills each year, keeping 27,000 computers, $13 million worth of school supplies, and $8 million worth of furniture and household supplies out of the waste stream. That's pretty incredible. Whereas the mission of Reuse PDX aligns with the city's Climate Action Plan goal of reducing local carbon emissions by 80% by 2050, and supports the city's goal of reducing by 25% the 2030 total solid waste generated while minimizing carbon emissions generated from waste disposal. And whereas the city of Portland is increasingly focused on supporting thoughtful consumption, particularly through the Bureau of Planning and Sustainability's Be Resourceful campaign. And whereas, together with our reuse partners, the Portland City Council and Multnomah County Board of Commissioners will work to promote the value of reuse and increase its understanding and practice in Portland and Multnomah County. Now therefore, I, on behalf of Sam Adams, Mayor of the City of Portland, City of Roses, do hereby proclaim June 22 through June 28, 2011, to be Reuse Week in Portland, and encourage all residents to observe this week. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Let me give you the original.
All right. Carla, can you please read the title for the next item?
Item 629, authorize a contract with Worley Parsons Westmar Corporation for the West Hayden Island Concept Plan and related studies for a total not to exceed amount of $359,916 and provide for payment.
Mr. Ingstrom. Portland City Council on Resolution Number 36805 directed the Bureau of Planning and Sustainability to prepare a legislative proposal for West Hayden Island, including an area plan, related comprehensive plan, and zoning changes necessary to annex West Hayden Island into the city. The resolution sets parameters with the intent to protect 500 acres of open space and identify 300 acres for future deep-water marine terminal. Legislative proposal requires the creation of a concept plan. Contractor will work with the city to develop a concept area plan based upon the city council parameters. Four important components of the concept planning process will include a rail study, an operational efficiency study, a transportation analysis with street plan alternatives, and specific research to aid staff with the economic, social, environment, and energy analysis. The main contractor, Worley Parsons, is collaborating with the team of subconsultants with local and regional expertise in the areas required to fulfill the contract. This is an ordinance to authorize a contract with Worley Parsons for the West Hayden Island Concept Plan and Related Studies for a not-to-exceed amount of $359,916. And with that, further explanation from Mr. Ingstrom.
Thank you, Mayor Adams. My name is Eric Ingstrom with the Bureau of Planning and Sustainability, and the Council Clerk is just handing you two other information sheets in case you're interested in a little more detail. One is a summary of the work plan with the task list, and another is a high-level summary of the staff from the consultants and the subconsultants, just so you get an idea of what the professions are that are involved in this and the firms that are involved. As the mayor went over the overall project background, and we all participated in a work session recently, so I'm not going to give you a long overview of the status of the project. In that work session most recently, we talked about the cost-benefit, and as the mayor indicated, a lot of that cost-benefit study is hinging on specific design ideas that come out of this concept planning work. And so this is an important piece of moving this project forward. The ultimate question that you're going to be voting on is whether to annex the site into the city of Portland, and part of any annexation involves a study of some of the potential public infrastructure costs of that action, and part of that is understanding what infrastructure we need. And so the concept designs we're putting forward here will give us a good, solid understanding of that. And while this isn't, it will not result in a specific development that the port will then go build, it will give us a solid ground to design a concept plan and a planned district and understand the financial impacts of annexation. And I'm here basically to answer any questions you may have.
There are no questions. Carla, do we have anyone signed up?
Yes, we have two people. Paul Riggs and Jeff Smith.
Aye, welcome. Glad you're here. You just need to give us your first and last name, no address, no phone number, and the clock will count down three minutes.
Good morning, Mayor Adams, Council members. My name is Paul Riggs, Columbia Pacific Building and Construction Trades Council, and we're here to speak in favor of this proposal. It's an important step to keep moving in the direction of bringing this industrial land into the economic base of the area, and from that standpoint, it should create a tremendous amount of jobs sometime in the future, and some of them immediate. And I'd also like to give them a compliment. I followed this project, and I'm happy to see that it does preserve the open space. It's one thing to go in there and make industrial land, but it doesn't have as much value if you retain that area, so thank you.
Jeff Smith, President, International Longshore Warehouse Union. This action is consistent with the council's action in July to plan for the mix of uses, open space, marine industrial, and West Hayden Island. The rail study, it's an operational efficiency studies, transportation analysis, and the economic, social, environment, and energy analysis. As Paul said, I support it also, and thank you for your time this morning.
Thank you for coming to City Hall, appreciate it. Carla, would you please call the vote?
Fish?
Aye.
Saltzman?
Aye.
Leonard?
I think this is an important step, and I also think it's important to frame what's happening here in its appropriate context, which goes back to the early '70s when the Oregon Legislature adopted urban growth boundaries, which were unique in the United States. It's interesting to me to watch the debate today, when I think people miss the appropriate frame of reference that this project is happening within. We want to keep development within the urban growth boundary to protect forests and farmland outside of the urban growth boundary. This project occurs within the urban growth boundary, so it's very important to understand that if we don't allow for industrial development within the UGB that was contemplated by the legislature in the early '70s to preserve farmland and open space and forests, then we will unintentionally cause pressure to have development occur outside of the urban growth boundary, on farmland, and forested areas in open space. So as we move forward on this discussion, I hope people keep in mind that it is very important to take advantage of the urban growth boundary for the very purposes of preserving open space. And I think that's what we're doing, and I think this is a smart next step forward, and I fully support it. Aye.
Fritz?
I appreciate the efforts of the city, the port, the advisory committee, and the consultants, and the Bureau of Planning and Sustainability, to take the extra time that's needed to closely examine the difficult issues associated with whether or not to develop West Hayden Island. It's particularly challenging since Metro designated this area both regionally significant industrial land and a regionally significant environmental resource. And I thank the city team for your efforts to make sure that the public is engaged in space-to discussion, particularly those living immediately adjacent to a possible development, and the attention being paid to environmental justice. Also, very appreciative of the cost-benefit analysis that's also part of this project so that we, on the city council, can make this decision based on the facts. And I'm very happy that the Office of Healthy Working Rivers is a part of this. And I also thank the advisory committee for your continued engagement and dedication, and we certainly appreciate the input and the work of everybody on this. It's a good process, which is, I hope, going to lead to a good conclusion. Aye.
Adams?
I would just add to Commissioner Leonard's fine remarks that this is also a very unique, this is also a very unique plot of land and a unique in-water opportunity. It is the last remaining opportunity to develop global international-class deep-water port in the city of Portland. So I am pleased to be part of a council that, after 23 years, 23 years of inaction, is taking action, and today, this is an important step forward in getting all the facts. So I want to thank everyone for your help and support, especially the folks and the staffs of the Office of Healthy Working Rivers and the Bureau of Planning and Sustainability. Thank you. Aye. So approved. Can you please read the title for the next item?
Item 630 is 10:20 Time Certain.
Okay, then let's go to, do we have any second readings?
We also have the pulled item off of consent, 642.
Okay, let's do that.
642, authorize contract with the Columbia Slough Watershed Council for $215,000 for Columbia Slough-related outreach and education.
Who pulled this?
The Bureau did. I believe they're just referring it back for some corrections.
Okay. So unless there are objections, referred back to Commissioner Saltzman's office, let's do, can you please read the title for 645?
645, appoint four members and reappoint six members to the Public Involvement Advisory Council.
These are all good people. We want to reappoint them. Does anyone have any questions? Anyone wish to testify on 645? Carla, would you please call the vote on 645? You're fast.
Fish?
Aye.
Saltzman?
Aye.
Leonard?
Aye.
Fritz?
Well, one of the reasons that we put this on the regular agenda was to point out that the PAAC, as we call it, the Public Involvement Advisory Committee, has established a new public involvement report that comes with every item, starting in July, so that that'll be some accountability. Also, I just wanted to read into the record the names of the people who worked so hard on this committee, which is somewhat unique in that it's half-staff and half-citizens, community members, so they're working very collaboratively, and it has many members from different bureaus. So the appointments that we're making today are for Alyssa Core, Elizabeth Kennedy Wong, Stephen Sykes, and Maureen Yandel, and we're reappointing Glenn Bridger, Jolene Jensen-Clausen, Lyndon Etikoven, Sim Dandareth Tan, Arnold Warren, and Chris White. And I greatly appreciate their service, and also Effie Faumach for your wonderful guidance to the group. Aye.
Adams?
Aye. So approved. Can you please read the title and call the vote for 647?
Grant revocable permit to Perry Era Creperi on behalf of Ankeny Street Businesses to close Southwest Ankeny Street between Southwest Second Avenue and Southwest Third Avenue from 7:00 a.m. June 20, 2011, until 11:00 a.m. November 1, 2011.
Point of order. How do you say that word again?
So point of order on this?
Yeah.
Are we going to make a motion to put the emergency clause back on so that this can have an immediate impact?
Yes.
I believe their intention is to set up this summer.
First, I had to have her read the title.
Yeah, sorry.
It's okay. I moved to put the emergency clause back on.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Please call the vote on the motion to reapply the emergency clause.
Fish?
Aye.
Saltzman?
Aye.
Leonard?
Aye.
Fritz?
Aye.
Adams?
Aye. Please call the vote on the now amended 647, that includes an emergency clause.
Fish?
Aye.
Saltzman?
Aye.
Leonard?
Aye.
Fritz?
I was supportive of this concept last week, wanted a little more time for discussion between the parties who participated in the hearing and the business owners. I like the European concept that this promotes and have some concerns about the sharing of the public space, but I'm particularly grateful to Shani Gagateller and Michael Moore for working with Dustin Knox and Trey Shannon and other business owners in this past week to come to some collaborative work so that we can move forward with this. I'm hoping that we'll have some discussion on it at the Sharing Public Spaces Advisory Committee and a report at the end of the pilot project there so that we can evaluate whether this is a good model for Portland to expand in other places. And I'm particularly grateful to the mayor for agreeing to put the emergency clause back on again, and again, for all parties for working together on this. Aye.
Adams?
Can you please read the title and call the vote for second reading, item number 648?
Assess benefited properties for street and stormwater improvements in the Northeast 109th Avenue Local Improvement District. Fish?
Aye.
Saltzman?
Aye.
Leonard?
Aye.
Fritz?
Aye.
Adams?
Aye. 648 is approved. Can you please read item number 649, resolution?
Authorize temporary operating loans between various funds to provide interim funding to cover lags in federal, state, and other grant reimbursements.
So I have an amendment to this item, don't I? No. I don't. I do.
No, I think to the overexpenditure.
Okay. We have three items today that all sort of deal with the same thing. They have to do with a cash flow issue, but they do not materially impact the budget regarding the East Side Street Car regarding the Eastside Streetcar Project. We have to, this amendment moves $5 million in LID construction fund dollars into the transportation operating account. This is a timing and accountability issue, not a budget issue. Overall, the Eastside Streetcar Project, construction project, is on time and on budget. Do you have more to add?
So I think that amendments to the overexpenditure ordinance, which is item 6, yeah, 630.
Okay. Can we go and read that one as well? Or did we take care of that? Was that a time certain?
That's the time certain that I think we have.
Oh, we have to wait for five more minutes.
But we can do the other ones first.
Let's do the other ones.
I have three items in total.
Okay, we're starting with this one.
Okay, so 649 is the interfund loans. The issue here, and I'll run briefly through it since it's the first time we've done it. Essentially, the grants funds, which include our Grants Fund, as well as our Community Development Block Grant and Home Fund, are considered reimbursement funds in the city. All of our grant expenditures for bureaus that receive grants are recorded in that fund, and of course, reimbursements are received mostly from state and federal government and from, you know, outside entities that are reimbursed for those expenses. The expenses under our accounting rules that the city uses in terms of a modified accrual, we accrue our expenses at the time the services are delivered, so the time we actually provide the service, we book the expense in the fund. However, the revenues are not recognized until the revenue is actually received. Generally, if the revenues come in on time, that's not a huge lag. Once we have the expense, we bill it, we get the revenues, you know, within 30 or 60 days afterwards. However, there are some issues, particularly with the federal government, where reimbursement takes considerably longer, and it can take up to six months to get reimbursed for those grant expenditures. What that does is it creates a lag between our expenses when they're booked and our revenues when they're received, and that can result in temporary negative fund balances. Local budget law prohibits the city, and any government for that matter, from having a negative fund balance at year-end, and generally accepted accounting principles prohibit negative cash balances at year-end as well. This is a relatively new issue for the city. When we implemented SAP, we moved the expenditures into the Grants Fund. It's considered a best practice, and it gave us a lot of other advantages. This is one downside to that that we need to take care of. So what the solution to this negative cash balance issue is to authorize these loans. The way these will work, they'll be temporary loans that will essentially be authorized on, as of June 30th in the current fiscal year. They will be paid back the following fiscal year. Most of them will probably be paid back on July 1st, so they'll be sort of one-day overnight loans for the fiscal year. Some of them may take a little bit longer to repay, but they will be repaid back, and they'll be repaid back with interest. So it really is a technical issue, although it is large-dollar amounts, and we're asking for over $30 million of loan authorization in order to make these, and then they'll get paid back.
Questions? Does anyone wish to testify? Go ahead.
So you said the loans will be paid back by the federal government primarily?
Well, they'll be paid back once we receive reimbursement from the federal government. So...
You're saying some of those may be overnight or very short duration before they're paid back?
Right. So one of the things with these loans is we're asking for authorization from council to make them. We will not actually execute the loans until our year-end close process is underway, and we know the exact amount that we need to. So we'll probably execute the loans retroactively sometime in August. At that point, to the extent we've received revenue from the federal government, we will also repay the loan just on an overnight basis. To the extent we're still waiting, we would reimburse the loan once the repayment is made from the federal government.
And the federal government monies are monies that are in their banks, so to speak, of the respective agencies like HUD and whoever's?
Right. They're essentially, I mean, it's essentially guaranteed, the loans...
Not subject to congressional appropriation.
That's right. Loans have been approved and authorized by all the levels of government. Some federal agencies reimburse within 30 days, some take six months. It sort of depends on the agency and the issue.
Okay, thanks.
All right. Anyone wish to testify on this matter? Carla, can you please call the vote?
Fish?
Aye.
Saltzman?
Aye.
Leonard?
Aye.
Fritz?
I'm very grateful to you and your team of experts for keeping track of all of these details. Aye.
Adams?
Aye. All right, that gets us to the time certain. Can you please call the 10/20 time certain?
Item 630, adopt budget adjustment recommendations and the supplemental budget for the fiscal year 2010-11 over expenditure process and make budget adjustments in various funds.
I have an addition, slight amendment, which I would like, I move the amendment, to insert an additional finding to prevent over expenditure in the grant fund and retain the federal-local funding balance reflected in the Eastside Streetcar Project construction budget. It is necessary to transfer $5 million from the LID construction fund into the transportation operating fund to cover expenditures on the Eastside Streetcar Project. And then in addition, under council directs, that the Auditor's Office transfer $5 million from LID construction fund to the transportation operating budget to support the Eastside Streetcar expenditures. This is related to the item we just had. So that's been moved.
Second?
Removed and seconded.
We have just a brief discussion, mayor, just an explanation again on this?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, is my understanding, and I'm actually not, yeah, Lisa, could you come up for a second? My understanding was it was an issue that we just discovered in the last couple of days, which is why it's showing up in an amendment. It would have been in the original ordinance anyway. Can you just explain briefly the...
Well, it actually will be, the money will go in, not into the Grants Fund, but into the operating fund, the transportation operating fund.
Did I say something else?
It is related to the streetcar charges from the Grants Fund. Those charges will go into the operating fund, but there is a concern that PBOAT's a particular object will be overspent in the transportation operating fund. That's the concern.
I think the issue is in the spring bump. Transportation had lowered one of their inter-agency with the LID fund.
That's right.
And then subsequent to that, learned that they actually were going to need that. So we had made this earlier adjustment and over-adjusted, you know, too far down, and now need to increase it, again, just to avoid an overexpenditure.
That's right, in the operating fund.
So is this...
So just, this speaks to, this project is funded by a variety of different revenue and by, out of a variety of different funds.
That's right.
And we have to keep them all within a certain balance according to state and federal and our own policies.
And our own local law, right. The PBOAT cannot overexpend in this particular object category, and there is a danger of that.
Were we expecting to spend $5 million from the LID construction fund for the streetcar?
Yes, just not at this moment, at this exact moment. They had, work on the streetcar had accelerated, which is a good thing. Unfortunately, that didn't match up with what the cash transfer between the LID construction fund and the transportation operating fund. So just...
I think PBOAT expected to spend the money next year, which is why they lowered it in the spring bump.
Right.
And then realized they actually were going to spend it this year.
They needed it sooner.
Right. So we need to make a correction for that.
So this comes from the LID for the streetcar?
Mm-hmm.
These construction funds, not from any other LID projects?
Of course not. There's an LID of, what, $14 million on this project, something like that?
I'm sorry, I don't know that.
Making a cut, so local property owners, a special assessment on local property owners who will benefit the most from the streetcar, it's coming from that LID fund.
That is also here if you have other questions.
Okay, anyone wish to testify? We're on the amendment, so please call the vote on the amendment.
Fish?
Aye.
Aye.
Leonard?
Aye.
Fritz?
Thank you for the clarifications. Aye.
Adams?
Aye. Motion is approved, and now I need to read the following statement. Is that right?
After council discussion.
Before the vote?
Yes, before the vote.
Okay. According to Oregon State Budget Law, ORS 294.480, I open hearing on the supplemental budget for the year 2010-2011 over expenditure process, making budget adjustments in various funds. Is there any member of the public who wishes to testify? Hearing done. I hereby close the hearing on the supplemental budget. Please call the vote.
Fish?
Aye.
Saltzman?
Aye.
Leonard?
Aye.
Fritz?
Thank you to Tim Crell and Tom Bazo and my staff who helped me puzzle through this as well as the OMF staff. Aye.
Adams?
Welcome. You get a little glimpse of the wild and complicated life of transportation funding. Aye. So approved. So that gets us to regular agenda. Who did that? Can you please read the title for 646?
646, assess benefited properties for street improvements in the southeast 31st Avenue Local Improvement District.
Thank you. Or do we have another one?
We have one more, but I can win.
Okay. Mr. Adams?
Good morning, Mayor Adams and council members. I'm Andrew Abbey, Local Improvement District Administrator. Southeast 31st Avenue LID came in about 35% below budget, and we received no objection to final assessment. I'm happy to answer any questions to my half.
Any questions from council? Does anyone wish to testify on this matter?
Someone signed up?
Carla, can you please call the vote on item number 464?
646.
It goes to a second reading?
Sorry, unless there, goes to a second reading. Let's see, that, can you please read, which one are you waiting for? Can you please read emergency ordinance, item number 650?
Update the dedicated portion of the utility license fee to fund Portland's transportation operations, maintenance, and safety needs.
So this implements part of the adopted budget that we discussed with each of you that, in order to balance the budget on an ongoing basis, we suspended the existing council policy regarding utility license fees going to the Bureau of Transportation. We suspended that policy to, again, balance the ongoing budget of the city, and we adopted a budget note that says anything above today's financial forecast that might come in goes back to seeking to fill up the remainder of the, what is now suspended utility license fee contribution to the Bureau of Transportation. There are two reasons from a policy standpoint, three. One is historic, in 1982, the city council established this policy, I think it was 82, 83.
Maybe 1988.
Sorry, 1988, established this policy and then suspended it for 20 years. There are aspects of the Bureau of Transportation related to, among other things, chasing after and trying to ensure the quality of the work in the public right-of-way by our franchisees, also paying for streetlights that have a number of benefits in addition to simply transportation. Would you like to add something?
No, this ordinance essentially, again, the budget includes 2.2 million of ongoing funding for PBOAT. The original council policy was to get to 4.3 million. This reestablishes that for an additional 2.1 million if utility license revenues come in above forecast. Just to give you a sense, utility license revenues are budgeted or forecasted 70, about 71 million next year, and growing to 85 million in year five. So we do already have a growth, and the growth would need to be above that in order for additional funds to go to transportation.
So any discussion from council? Anyone wish to testify on 650? Carla, would you please call the vote?
Fish?
Aye.
Saltzman?
Aye.
Leonard?
Aye.
Fritz?
I'm especially glad for your leadership on this, mayor. It does fund basic services, as you said, lights and safety and things like that, so I'm glad to see us reinstituting this policy for the upcoming fiscal year. Aye.
Adams?
Aye. So approved. Can you please read the title and call the vote for item, second reading, item number 648?
I think we already did that one.
Sorry, thank you. Can you please read the title for Resolution, item number 649?
We did that, too. I don't have any other items left.
Oh, I'm so early. That's a record. I don't know what to do. We are in recess until 2:00 p.m.
Goodness gracious.